Good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of March 12, 2018. The time is 8:00 PM. Welcome. Thank you for being patient with us. One, a housekeeping matter. With the sound system, I'd just like to remind everyone to speak closer to the mic, about six inches, the length of a dollar bill, just so everyone can hear clearly and that the audiovisual team can record this meeting. That goes for the public at the podium and council and staff up here. Just be mindful that you are speaking into the mic, just because we do record these meetings. Thank you for allowing that. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Yes. Mayor Protam Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Giddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. Okay, thank you. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation by Councilman Giddings and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet here today. We ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Nothing from staff tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. We can go to a meeting open to the public. This would be the opportunity for anyone to come up and discuss any issue that you'd like. It'd be helpful if you can give your name. It's not required to give your address, but it'd also be helpful for our records. There's not many people here tonight, so we won't really limit debate to three minutes. But just be mindful that you don't repeat yourself and direct your comments to me as the chair and try not to make any personal attacks. But good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor. Ray Gilson. I'm with the fire union here in the city. My address is 1-8046 Totera Drive, Madison, Macomb. I do have a prepared statement here, and I also have a copy I'd like to provide you guys if you'd like to follow along.
Yeah, I'll accept the copy. Thank you. The floor is yours.
All right. All right, good evening, everyone. After reviewing the budget goals for this coming fiscal year, I'm happy to see a viable increase in our fire staffing. On behalf of the union, I want to thank you all for this. This is one step closer to the six firefighters that we do need. These six firefighters that we need are just to provide the citizens the bare minimum service. There are too many times we cannot meet that bare minimum for our citizens. Let me give you some statistics for 2018. Accurate as of today, there have been five calls this year where no Madison Heights fire units were available to respond. From the information I have, there has also been additional four runs that the fire marshal or the fire chief have responded to on their own. That makes nine runs in two months where our own appropriate units did not and could not make scene. Chief and marshal do not generally respond to these runs. In these cases, they responded because we had nobody else. They respond in utility-type vehicles that carry very little equipment. We have already received mutual aid from outside agencies for medical runs 23 times this year. It is not uncommon that we have to try several agencies before we can get a unit that is able to respond. These numbers given came from reports through our fire report software. I have not had a chance to analyze each run and provide all the details of each one of these, and this may not be the best time for that. In one case about a week ago, though, we didn't have a unit available to respond until eight minutes after the 911 call. Fourteen minutes elapsed before our engine made scene. These things happen all too often and are not isolated instances. Not all of these are easily trackable with a report. I'm only giving you examples that I have knowledge of. The biggest thing that we can alleviate, to do to alleviate these shortcomings is an increase in staffing, specifically minimum staffing. Here are a few reasons why minimum staffing is so crucial. Let me explain briefly, when we are at six or seven personnel for the day, what happens when a fire run comes in. If the crew is at station two, they grab their gear from the ambulance and move it over to the fire engine and then respond. At station one, the ambulance crew will move their gear over to the ladder truck and respond. Now, what this does is removes both of our ambulances from service. They will now be sitting unstaffed in an empty fire station. This is a problem for two reasons. If we are on an active fire scene and we arrive to find a victim or one of the firefighters becomes hurt, we will have to request for an outside agency to bring us an ambulance. Secondly, during this run, if a resident calls 911 for an unrelated medical emergency, the Madison Heights Fire Department has no ambulances to send, and we must contact an outside agency once again. Meanwhile, our two ambulances are sitting at the station. This even happens on a simple false fire alarm call. As you can see from the numbers I gave you, these situations do happen. With more staff on duty, this would decrease how much this happens. In a situation where a fire run comes in and the ambulance from station one is not in quarters, we cannot bring the ladder truck. With station two, the scenario is the same, except we cannot bring a second fire engine. Now, you may be asking, how often are we at six or seven personnel for the day? The answer so far for 2018 is 81 percent of the time. That is a mere 13 days for 2018 we've had eight personnel on duty, which means both fire engines and ambulances are staffed for the entire shift. I'd like to take a trip back to 2010. July of 2010 is when our minimum manning was cut from eight to six. In 2010, we responded to 3,300 runs. At this time, we had 28 firefighters. Fast-forwarding to 2017, our run volume is up 36 percent to 4,500 runs. Yet, our minimum staffing is down 25 percent, and we have three less firefighters. At this time, we also had three officers per shift, which is now only two. Now, I'm going to shift gears a little bit to compare us with what's going on with staffing in our police department. We love our men and women in blue, and I'm only using them for a comparison. They have lost a lot of personnel, but I do not have the exact number as to how many that has been. For as long as anyone I have spoken to can remember, their minimum staffing for road patrol has not been cut. Ten-plus years ago, you would have received the same number of police officers for a call as you would right this very minute. I cannot say the same for the fire department. At its peak, we had a nine-man minimum, so today, the minimum firefighters you receive is 33 percent less, which is only six. Both our personnel numbers and minimum staffing numbers have been reduced in the fire department, whereas the police department has just had their personnel numbers reduced. This is why the police department's overtime is astronomical and ours is not. PD also has not seen the increase in the run volume like we have, not trying to downplay the need for police or any other department's need for additional staff. You all are faced with some difficult decisions as to what is needed, who, what is needed the most. My humble opinion, there is no other department within this city that is hurting as bad as we are. These deficiencies we face, I feel, also has an impact on the services we are trying to deliver to the citizens. I feel in some cases, we are not delivering the services the citizens expect, simply because we do not have enough bodies to be there for them and their need. With this information I have given, I'm asking you this question. Is this the best time to add a new code enforcement officer? I do realize the need for code enforcement and its importance to the community, but currently, we cannot always send a fire unit to our own calls because of our staffing. There's not enough money. Should we take the $115,000 and earmark it for a second firefighter next year? The one firefighter you're all considering to add tonight will help with these statistics. However, if we could add a second firefighter, I feel these numbers will greatly improve compared to adding a single firefighter. With two firefighters, we could potentially increase each shift by one firefighter. This will have the biggest impact until we can get us to an eight-man minimum each day. I feel this is the bare necessity to provide an adequate service to the citizens, to provide an adequate service the citizens are expecting. Another option that will help facilitate incremental growth is to increase our minimum to seven. This should also greatly improve the numbers I spoke about. This should increase the odds that we end up at eight personnel more often. At eight personnel, we have one more truck on the road ready to serve. As you may recall, the Plant Moran Study from 2006 stated we should never fall below eight personnel, and we should have 33 firefighters. With a 36 percent increase in runs since then, I'm willing to bet you can understand the need to bring our numbers up close to that 2006 suggestion. Another comparison model is a fairly recent FPA study from August of 2016. They use a number that is an amount of firefighters per thousand residents. Madison Heights is considered to be .81 firefighters per 1,000 residents. The average in the Midwest is 1.69 firefighters per 1,000 residents. This is double what we are here in Madison Heights. I am also very confident we are the lowest-ranking department in our Oakway Mutual Aid Group. Time did not permit me to obtain all these numbers to provide you with that exact data, but I could gather that data for you if you would like. Lastly, it does not appear that converting three firefighters to sergeants has made the list. I want to add a few things for you on this. This is almost a cost-neutral proposal. Anytime a sergeant or lieutenant offers a shift, the most senior firefighter is appointed to an acting sergeant. There is an hourly pay increase for that firefighter. Essentially, the city is paying for a sergeant but is receiving a firefighter that is untrained to perform the duties of that role. I believe the second sergeant position was eliminated in 2011 as a budget gap reduction. I'm hoping this data speaks for itself, resulting in reconsideration of implementing the three sergeants and adding two firefighters for the 2018/19 budget. We seem to get busier every year. The sooner we can make staffing changes, the safer the residents will be. A seven-man minimum with two firefighters could bring our staffing up to nine personnel for each unit. This would be one step closer to the bare minimum of eight that we need. It's a lot of information in a short time. I'd be happy to clarify any questions you may have. I'm also available anytime to have further discussions on these issues. I also strongly encourage that all of you reach out to me or possibly meet with me, and if that's not the best, then possibly meet with the fire chief. I do want to thank you all for your support and your time. The irony in this statement here is I had this finished yesterday, and we had a series of events that happened this morning that pretty much outlined this whole report. I'll make this real quick, because I've been a few minutes here. 6:43 this morning was the time of call for a bedroom on fire with a report of people who couldn't breathe. Engine 71 had a seven-minute response time, arrived on the scene at 6:50. They drove past engine 72, sitting in the station empty. Station two was .5 miles from this fire scene, sat there, couldn't respond. Both ambulances happened to be at Beaumont Royal Oak with patients. The fire marshal arrived four minutes later than the engine and started to provide care with the engine's equipment to the two patients. At 6:59, Ferndale Fire was our second arriving fire unit. Engine 71, with two men, fought this fire alone for nine minutes. Our fire department photographers got a photo up on Facebook this evening of our lieutenant, our shift commander, who's supposed to be running the fire scene, packed up, manning a hose, trying to put this hose out because we had nobody else. Two guys, for the first nine minutes of this call, to fight a fire and deal with two patients. Both ambulances managed to make the scene. It took them right about 20 minutes. You know, I guess my question is, what if this was your house, guys, gals? You know, how can we tell the residents they're being protected? I know I can't. I can't tell them that. Thank God, nobody died, but will the next time somebody die when there's an engine a half a mile away with no one in it? I don't know the answer to that. It's amazing to me, this has only happened one time to this severity. We should have had four guys on scene within seven minutes and two guys within two minutes, but our six-man minimum prevented a timely response with adequate resources. Last thing I have is, when you're considering the 2018 and 19 budget, whether it's a budget goal or other items, would you be able to tell the resident that the items we have in the budget this year are more important than two men on a fire truck a half a mile from their home? Because that home this morning may not have been nowhere near as bad as it was had we been there in two to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, firefighter Gilson. Meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to discuss any subject? The floor is open. Good evening.
Good evening. Nate Figaroa, 1576 Myrtle Avenue. I'm also the treasurer for the Madison Heights Fire Union. I believe that puts me in an interesting position to kind of touch on some of what Ray has spoken about in regards to the lack of minimum staffing here in the city. I've been fortunate enough in my career to have worked for multiple jurisdictions and finally was able to settle down and work in the city that I live in, and it's a city that I love and that I look forward to making a better place to live throughout my career here. What Ray has touched on and requested here, in my opinion, and I know he's touched on it a few times, are the six firefighters that we need are still numbers that put us at minimum staffing requirements and still below what the NFPA recommends on a fire scene, which is 15 firefighters on a fire scene. Our auto aid groups that we have in the city does get us close to that number, assuming that Hazel Park and Ferndale also have staffed equipment that they're able to send. But there is a large delay and a lag in getting those firefighters on scene. Again, my concern is, is I've seen this, what happened this morning, the potential for it play out on countless numbers of occasions as I'm on duty working in the city. I just ask you guys all, you're citizens, you're residents of this city. I know Ray touched on, too, about what the residents expect, and I would even say what they deserve. You know, taxes aren't cheap here in Oakland County. We pay a lot for them. We have a lot of great services in the city. I think our fire department does an outstanding job with the number of people that we have. But I just want you all to consider, moving forward, that what happened this morning with two firefighters fighting a fire could have very well been one of your guys' houses. All right? And in my opinion, it's unacceptable. I have a family and three kids in this city. I have brothers and sisters and nieces and nephews that also live and reside in this city and call it home, and the thought that anybody, any resident, should ever have to watch two firefighters try to fight their house on fire is a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? All right, no one's asked to be recognized. We'll continue on with our agenda. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's see, no communications tonight, so we'll go to reports D1 from the city manager, the 2018/19 city goal plan. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Based on input from council and city departments, there were 70 goal proposals that were generated and reviewed, and special goals workshops were held on February 5th and March 5th. Presented for council's consideration is the proposed 2019 goal plan, which includes an organizational mission statement and 25 goal proposals that are organized into categories of health, public safety, quality of life, and resource management. I recommend that council adopt the proposed 2018/19 goal plan as presented.
All right, what's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a few questions right now?
No, I need a motion first for discussion.
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the motion that we do not approve this.
All right, there's a motion made to not approve the goal plan. Is there a second to this motion?
That's a negative motion.
I don't think there will be a second, so the motion fails for no second. What other motions from city council regarding the goal plan?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move to approve the goal plan.
Motion to approve the goal plan. Is there a second for the motion? It'll open discussion.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I'll second to open discussion.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Protam Mark Bliss, to approve the city goal plan. We'll open the floor for council discussion.
Okay.
Council Grabstein?
Mr. Mayor, can I get a bit more information about this new code enforcement officer? And there seemed to be a bit of misunderstanding, I guess, on my part when we initially went through this, and then again last week when we went through it again. The code person, to my understanding, was someone who was being hired in order to free up the time of our main code person, so that our main code person could issue tickets and then go to court to be the witness, or however it is that the code person goes to court, and this other person would be able to cover them. However, it appears that I had a misunderstanding there, so I'm wondering what the reason for the code enforcement person is. If I could get clarification on that.
Yeah, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, Your Honor, there were, I guess I'd refer right back to the language in the goal proposal was that, remember, it was a hybrid goal. There was an initial staff goal to create a program that would target evenings, weekend code enforcement, and there was a coincidental goal proposal to devise a new strategy, and those were merged at one of our goals workshops. And basically, as we understand it from the language, the new code officer would be designed to support that split schedule, to allow enforcement on times that we don't have a code enforcement officer readily available, and secondly, to implement the second half of the goal of basically penalizing frequent offenders and looking at our policy and changing our policy as council wanted to do through the goal proposal to accomplish that.
Okay, so with the part of the policy that applies to the frequent flyers, as they're called, what's the expected increase in tickets and increase, or decrease in infractions with that?
Your Honor, I don't think we have a target for tickets. Again, our goal has always been compliance, and tickets have honestly never been viewed as success in and of themselves. They indicate that the homeowner hasn't complied with the code, and it indicates that code enforcement has not been able to get homeowner, or compliance with the code. Tickets, you know, that is something, that is something that I think council indicated with some of these, quote, "frequent flyers," that there needs to be a more aggressive path to get to the ticket, but also to get to, to get to compliance. So I don't think that we have a target at this point for a number of tickets, but clearly that is the intent of the policy, is to get more aggressive.
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
So, I originally proposed this goal back in 16. You know, there was an article about it in the Madison Park News that talks about this, that quotes myself, Mayor Hartwell, and Councilman Corbett as well, and I guess the summary of it is increasing the severity of penalties and the frequency of visits to check homes of frequent flyers. And it also talks about being able to do after-hours checks, sending officers to be able to drive past the residents on off-hours. All of that has been consistent since 16. Part of this proposal is to be able to make sure that we have the manpower to achieve all of those goals. You know, we could create a policy that says, we're going to have more visits on houses that require them, and we're going to have after-hours checks and all of those things, but if we don't have the manpower to do it, then it'll never happen anyway. So this proposal, you know, I personally feel is a very well-rounded, you know, 360-degree view of improving code enforcement, because it doesn't just specify and prescribe a policy, nor does it just add a person to it without fixing policy, but it does both at the same time. It says, we're going to add a person. The person is going to be, you know, dedicated to doing these after-hours checks, doing it on hours that we're not typically doing this, and then we're adding in the policy for escalation. So in my personal opinion, and I'm definitely biased because I pitched it in the first place, but, you know, it is a very, very well-written proposal that we could evaluate at the end of the year and see if we want to continue this, because it does have to achieve results. I mean, we have to, we have to clean up the neighborhoods. You know, that's what we have to do here. We've had public health crisis homes in our city, you know, the one we had to tear down. And so this will hopefully enable us to identify those quicker, to be able to put the pressure on those homes. And so, I mean, I don't know if there's questions about other goal proposal items that, you know, I'm happy to get to those, but this one in particular, I think, has been out in the public for a long time, vetted by staff, you know, council in general. I mean, are there ways that we can improve it? Absolutely, but I think that that's probably tied into the policy discussion that we haven't yet approved, what that increased policy is going to be. That'll have to come to us at a later date, once staff has a chance to figure it out.
Okay, so the objective is to clean up our neighborhoods. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Of course, to gain compliance. So when, you know, when we go to every street and every house in every neighborhood, I mean us elected officials, I mean, it's the most common complaint we get from our residents, that our city is a mess, that one of our councilmen would bring daily lists from his trails in the city of obvious openly offending residents that should have been cleaned up. And, yeah, Mr. Bliss, you know, it's a public health crisis when you have houses that need to come down because they're, whatever, but, yeah, the goal is to get compliance for our code.
And I'm curious, Mr. Mayor. I am leery of hiring someone to continue with this job. When I'm, I guess I'm curious, what have we done to try and increase compliance and decrease the number of complaints? Because I would agree, the biggest complaint that I heard was people complaining about their neighbors and people complaining that tickets weren't being issued and that warnings, and by the time the warnings were, they would pretty much expire if someone hasn't taken care of their lawn. By the time it happens, half the summer is gone. So I'm wondering how an extra person is going to help with that.
You're right. Until we know what's going to change, why are we going to throw money into a burning trash barrel? I mean...
This is a quality of life issue?
You want, the argument is, we need to see the policy, and we need to have assurance that this new enhanced policy will be followed, because otherwise, we're just wasting our money for more boots on the ground, and nothing's going to change.
We don't have a policy, so if I could see that, well, if we hire five people and in six months, we are going to have 10 percent of the blight that we have now, that would be something that I could say, okay, I can get behind that. But what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing is, we're going to hire somebody for one year, because if I'm correct as well, this budget is only for one year, this position.
Your Honor, that is not correct. If the person's hired, that would be a full-time employee.
Yeah, so you better, if we're going to pay for that employee for, you know, the rest of their legacy costs, right, retirement, we better, it sounds like council, we better have assurance that new policy, something has to change in the streets.
Your Honor, there wouldn't be legacy costs under our new benefits and pension systems, but your point's taken.
Okay, I, so I had requested, but I never received the spreadsheet that we had last week that had how we were spending our budget, and it was my understanding from that, that this position was a one-year position, and it was my misunderstanding that that position would pretty much be funded by all the tickets that were going to come about from this new person ticketing everybody. So I guess I'm missing something here. Do we, I didn't write notes for the copy of the spreadsheet and it never arrived in a packet. So I don't know. Mr. Mayor, do you have a copy of that?
Copy of what, what specifically?
Soccer complex on the screen, we had numbers, we had our goals, we had police officer, police officer year one, police officer year two, firefighter year one, firefighter year two, code enforcement officer one year, conversation took place. Well, that's only for one year, the others are two. Should we have this for two years? Well, we don't have the money for two years. Well, it doesn't really matter, because if this person is doing their job, they're going to be ticketing people, and we're going to have the money, which is why I asked for the question of how are we going to suddenly go from however many tickets are now to issuing so many they're going to fund this position? So again, I don't understand what the policy is. If we don't have a policy, if this person is just going to be told, well, go and warn everybody, tell them they shouldn't do it, which is the situation we're in now, then, so what, we have two and a half people doing that instead of one person doing that, one and a half people doing it?
All right, to go back to your request, you're saying, where's that worksheet that council was working on at the last open meeting we had? Because for the public, city council...
This was public.
Yeah, it was open public meeting posted. And we had a workshop where we rolled up our sleeves and really dug into these goals, and we actually started to put, you know, dollar signs to our goals, and surprisingly, city council found...
And surprisingly, city council found an additional $400,000 that we thought should not be spent elsewhere, but instead, that $400,000 should be spent on our present batch of goals. And you're asking to see that dollar sheet?
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, that was a one-time. With the budget, we have recurring costs. So, for example, a new firefighter, a new code enforcement, a new person, or a new program we're going to do, which is a recurring cost that we have to budget for every year.
Yeah, all right.
The water park filters, those are recurring, if we choose to do that, is recurring. And then we have one-time, the city clerk would like to do something, that is a one-time. And so the money we found was a one-time money.
Yeah, right.
And we said, we're going to split it, and we're going to make the fire and the police department positions two-year. So instead of saying we're going to fund for one, we're going to fund for two. And the code enforcement was one-year, and we had a discussion about this.
Your Honor, I think there is a misunderstanding, because even with the police and firefighters' positions, the fact that council wanted to pre-fund out of that money for years one and two, does not mean that those are two-year positions. When they're hired as full-timers, they are full-time employees, hired as career employees. And code enforcement was no different. The discussion with those positions happened to be that council wanted to take some of that extra money, and set it aside to at least cover the first two years of the position. I, one more thing, I do not recall any statements made by staff at either goals workshop that said the full-time code enforcement officer was going to be paying for him or herself through tickets.
Here, I have a quote. I took about half a dozen notes of our first workshop, Councilor Grafstein, and a member of staff said, quote, "Part-time pays for himself on permits alone," end quote. So I wrote down "part-time."
Okay, well, then I guess I'm new, and there's a lot of misunderstandings. So this part-time person, then, is going to pay for themselves, and we're, from the budget, going to pay for the rest.
Your Honor, I think that deserves a clarification as well, in that if the part-time code enforcement officer comes in on a Saturday or Sunday shift, because of their hourly rate and the number of hours they're working, I think, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's very possible that catching perhaps one, two, or three instances of non-permitted work would cover the part-time employee's wage for that day.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Safer.
Yeah, point of clarification, your quote is correct, but it's partial. I went on to say that that is, we have our part-time code enforcement officer voluntarily work Saturdays when we have a holiday, or he takes a day off. So, and then I give him the opportunity to pick those hours up on a Saturday. When he does that, it is fairly common, he'll run across roofing jobs that don't have permits, siding jobs, window jobs, hot water heaters. These are folks that are doing things without permits. He does not issue tickets, and we do not derive revenue from those tickets. He has them, issues them a warning, they come in, and they pull the necessary permits. We are prohibited by state law from imposing any fee to penalize somebody under the building code for not doing permitted work. So we only are allowed to require that they pull the necessary permit. That's what I was referring to. Nothing to do with violations, or ordinance violations, or tickets. Had to do with permits. Those are permits that they should have gotten anyways. Failed to do so, we've caught them, and then they come in, and they do the right thing.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that clarification. So I'm going to repeat my understanding of this, because there seems to be so much confusion here, apparently on my part. So the code person is not going to be looking at people who haven't taken in their trash, and people who are complaining about vermin, and people who are complaining about odors and eyesores, and those kinds of complaints, of which people I talked to, there are multiple. This code person is going to be after the person who is doing his roof on a Saturday, so he's not caught. No?
Mr. Mayor? No, that's absolutely not the case. They would do all of the things that you mentioned, with the exception of rodents. Rodents is an animal control issue, which code enforcement will cover in the absence of animal control. But with the exception of that, absolutely, this person will be handling all of those. From day one, the goal that I presented was afternoon, evening, and weekend code enforcement. No difference in the functions of that code enforcement officer. Same tasks, however, people know that at 4:35, Monday through Friday, have at it. And they know, Saturday and Sunday, have at it. What we have found on Saturdays, when we've done the occasional code enforcement activity as I've described, a lot of surprised people. "What are you doing here? You're here on a Saturday, what are you, you know, you don't work Saturdays." Evenings, we get lighting complaints routinely. I have to have a code enforcement officer come in on overtime to address lighting complaints. Temporary signs, signage, illegal parking on private property issues that come up. These sorts of things are routinely occurring in the evening, afternoon, late afternoon, evening, and on Saturdays and Sundays. That's been the intent of this since day one. It was never an intent to increase tickets.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, so it would be more to make sure people are compliant and up to code with any building-type things they are doing, and making sure their permits are in place. So I'm getting my driveway done, I'm doing it on a weekend to avoid a permit.
Mr. Mayor, that's one of the things, along with weeds, grass, lighting, illegal signs, all of the other things that code enforcement routinely becomes involved in. One of the things that perhaps is a misunderstanding, code enforcement does not deal with building code violations. When they observe work that's going on, they have laptops with them in the field that are live, they know who does and does not have permits. When they observe that activity, it's immediately entered in. What their role is, is to record it, document it, give the warning, and then those folks carry through to the building department and apply for the necessary permits. Again, building code is different. We cannot impose violation fines on building code violations, the state law prohibits it.
So if, Mr. Mayor, if someone is working on the weekend, and they don't have the permit, then there is no fine or ticket, but on Monday, they need to obtain their permit to continue their work?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Your Honor, and they pay that fee, which we otherwise wouldn't have gotten, because we wouldn't have been able to catch them.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I can just continue.
Yes, please.
Now, if they fail to do so, if they fail to come in and pull a permit, then absolutely, we will proceed with enforcement up to and including a ticket.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering, we have 1.7, I believe, is the FTE, the full-time employee we have for code enforcement, that's one full-time person and a part-time person, if I'm correct? Yes, okay.
Yep.
And they both work this Monday to Friday, but the part-time person, when they don't come in, they come in evenings and weekends. So I'm wondering if we could change that person's hours to just be weekends and evenings? And that would help with the weekend and evening issue?
So you're suggesting, you know, maintain the current full-timer and part-timer, do not add more time, but just shift their hours of operation?
Or even increase the person that we have, the part-timer, to a full-time role? Instead of adding a third person to the mix, and I have to say, I obviously have family in the city, and if my house or my neighbor's house was on fire, I would want a firefighter there, not a code enforcer.
Okay, so, I mean, we have this written goal plan that was prepared by staff, which reflected city council's opinions, you know, just some consensus building. So there's a motion whether we adopt this, goal plan is printed, that's the motion on the floor. Anyone could make substitute motions if they want to start changing things. But before we leave the room, the building, we need to give staff some direction on what to start putting into the budget. So we need to adopt some sort of goal plan tonight. It's either the one on paper, or I need to start hearing some substitute motions that would get support on changing something. We got to start giving staff direction. At some point, we got to get words and numbers on paper.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think it would be doing a disservice if we don't listen to the two gentlemen that came here tonight, that said what they did say about being short-staffed and having vehicles down due to the fact that we're short-staffed. I mean, I would feel awfully bad for the rest of my life if we had a vehicle sitting at the fire department that wasn't able to respond, because we didn't have the adequate numbers to make that happen. And I think we should at least speak to that subject tonight to a certain extent, or delay approving it for two weeks. I just think these are facts that are brought in front of us that we should at least look at. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Your Honor, I would just add that the staff, you were correct, Your Honor, the staff does need direction on goals. We are underway with our proposed budget, and in order to meet our calendar and get council the proposed budget on time, we need to stay on track.
Work backwards for me on our calendar. Budget has to be approved by when? When do we plan on having the meeting? When do we have a plan on having a proposed budget printed?
Sure. Proposed budget comes to council in early April, I believe, that first Thursday, or your workshop is scheduled for April 25th, and then budget approval occurs the first, and levy of taxes occurs the first council meeting in May, which I think is the 14th.
To have, thank you, to have an effective budget workshop, we need a proposed budget printed to have in our hands, in our residents' hands, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, just, wait a minute, so, I mean, do we have any flexibility on delaying tonight's vote for a goal plan?
Your Honor, I would say not at this point, just given where we are in the timeframe.
Mr. Mayor?
I interrupted Ms. Grafstein. Rosalind, do you have anything to add?
I'm curious if we could find out what the difference from 1.7 to making this 0.7 person a full-time, which would somewhat increase the code enforcement staff, as well as this policy that's being developed, that will hopefully have objectives and, you know, that are quantifiable, so we can see if it's working, how much money we would save from this $115,000, and if that could be put towards the fire department for the chief to use as he sees fit to assume hire someone.
Your Honor?
I mean, do we have those back-of-napkin calculations of how much it would cost to increase our current part-timer, to promote that part-timer to become a full-time?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't done completely. The other side of that is, as I previously stated, I had thought that this code person was a one-year thing, and that the firefighter and police that we had approved were two-years. So if that's not the case, then theoretically, going on that, that's five positions. So we could actually change the, having the money for a firefighter for two years, to having two firefighters for one year, and also increasing the police department.
And then next year, we just have to, you know, find the money? Either hope the revenues increase, or we can make cuts elsewhere, or find grants?
There's a lot of confusion with this, with the one-time versus the recurring. So if we're now just making this all the same, then why not?
Actually, what about that? City council, that may be the easiest escape hatch. Instead of funding that firefighter position for two years, let's just take that money for the second year, and hire a second firefighter now.
Mr. Mayor? And a second officer, police officer.
That too. So the code enforcement would, that goal would stand as written?
No, no. I would change, we need to have a policy. If we have someone, okay? If you keep doing something the same way, and it's not working, it's not efficient, and you say, "Well, you know what, you come and help me do this, this is how I do it." Then you have two people doing it in an inefficient manner, and yes, you're going to get a little bit more done, but why don't we step back, see what we're doing, come up with a policy, and then maybe, we only need one person doing it, maybe we need the 1.7, maybe we do need to have this extra person, but before we hire and train someone, let's make sure that it's being done right. Give them other resources, aren't necessarily a person. Set up some kind of a blight hotline, see if, you know, why is it that this guy never mows his lawn? Because he's lazy? Well, then you should ticket him. Because he's disabled, and he can't do, well, then you know what, we need to get him some help. Because he's on vacation a lot? Okay, well, let's see what we can set up. What are the reasons here?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I just want to make the point that this is not a process that we just came up here tonight. I mean, for the sake of those in the audience, and at home, you know, we've been vetting this for months, having this discussion for months, I mean, in this case, for this particular proposal, years, trying to figure out how best to solve the needs of our residents. And part of what, you know, staff is waiting for, to be able to spend their hours and resources, is for us to adopt a goal, and, you know, put that forward. In the same, in this process, the things that were the highest ranked, were adding staffing to police and fire, adding staffing to code enforcement, and fixing the gun range. Those were the high-ranked items. Those were the things that this council's investing in. We made cuts elsewhere in the budget to make sure that it could happen, and, you know, I'm frankly very proud of this process. You know, I think we did a great job, we've improved upon it every year. Now, I will say, what I said in the goals meeting, when we were talking about setting aside money for year two, my intention wasn't to set it aside. My intention was to allocate the two firemen, and free up that additional money for potential other goals. I said that there, the general consensus of council ended up going in a different direction, and here we are at the table, but I don't want, I just want to be very, very clear, in that this has been a whole process with multiple public meetings, with all of us at the table, and sharing the things that residents have told us has been important to us. So there's not, you know, there's not necessarily new information that we're hearing, there's not a lack of discussion that we've had on this. You know, could we get more? Absolutely. Should we add in that second firefighter? If that's the discussion we're having, then let's just have that discussion.
Will you make a motion on that matter?
I'd be happy to. Substitute motion to adopt the goals plan as printed, with the change of adding two firefighters instead of one.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Is there a second substitute motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings? I'm going to restate the motion, and if I misstate it, please correct me, Mr. Bliss and Mr. Geddings. A substitute motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to adopt the goal plan as printed with one correction, and that being, the firefighter, the additional firefighter position for year two will instead be a second additional firefighter in year one. Is there a better way to say that, Mr. Attorney?
I think it just says to add one firefighter now, so this would be just adding two, and it would reduce the savings that we're carrying over into next year, which we would then spend in next year's goal cycle, pending, you know, growth, the economy, everything's going on.
Really... Mr. Mayor, could you speak up? What's the best way to say this? What's the best way?
Well, no, just to clarify the motion, as I would record it on the goals list, instead of having two line items in the goals list that say additional firefighter year one, additional firefighter year two, which means one firefighter, two funding and a pre-funding, scratch the year two, and it's a second position for year one. So you have two.
And then, Your Honor, I would also like to add into my substitute motion that the additional year we were planning to prepay for police, we would just convert that into public safety, you know, set-aside money that we will revisit next year, you know, as a, instead of it prepaying, we're not prepaying any other positions, let's just set that aside as savings for next year.
Wait a minute, there, okay...
I don't think, Mayor Pro Tem, I don't know that you need that, because that's...
Don't debate it, let's just clarify the language. So Mayor Pro Tem Bliss is clarifying a substitute motion that it's adopting the goal plan with the following exceptions. Changing the additional firefighter for year two, and making that a second additional firefighter in year one. And furthermore, to take the additional police officer slash detective funding in year two, and to not earmark that for anything but for...
Public safety.
Public safety.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings, I just want to just, Mr. Geddings, is it, okay, all right. Staff, can you... Staff, can you help us with this?
Just one point, Your Honor. Since council only budgets for one year and we appropriate funds for that year, it really isn't a legal set-aside at this point. But practically speaking, you know, that savings will flow through fund balance, all else being equal, and you'll start out next year, you know, with that already factored into the overall equation. But you don't appropriate funds for two fiscal years.
Right.
So it wouldn't be a legal action to do a set-aside or an earmark because we're really only talking about fiscal year 2019 at this point, not 1920.
It's just money that's going to sit in the general fund unspent.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sherman, please.
So that's, I agree with the city manager relating to his comments. So now the question is whether or not Mr. Gettins, who's the support for the substitute motion, agrees to the clarification regarding the second firefighter position in year one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett, please.
Let me move off the mechanics of this for a second.
Yeah, sure.
We'll come back to it. Just a couple of points that I'd like to remind the council of. We didn't just fall off the hay wagon tonight and get presented with a set of proposals that we're now live with or take it or not take it. The goal of all of us going in was to increase public safety personnel. I'm perfectly fine with that. The idea of, sorry about that, the idea of the first and second year was my idea, if you will recall. And the reason for that was, and I just want to remind everybody here, we didn't know how we were going to pay for that extra police officer, and we didn't know how we were going to pay for the extra firemen, and we still don't know the answer to that question in year two. We knew how we were going to get it for year one because we pulled it out of the environmental account, if you recall, and now we had 400-some-odd thousand or whatever it was. And I said if you, you know, and we just got done, by the way, and at some point, we do have to remind the public about the legacy cost issue which is hanging over us. Every police and fireman in this city, we took a pass on extra funding towards the accumulated cost. That's still an issue that's hanging over our heads right now. So against that backdrop, we took a leap of faith. We took the 400,000, and the reason we took 200,000 and 200,000 was he said, "Well, we're going to prepay the policemen and the firemen for the first year. At least we know where we're going to get the money for the first two years." So that's fine, but this isn't found money, and Consular is absolutely correct when she says it's one-time money. Come the 1920 year, if I did that note, the 2021 year, we don't have the money for those officers. Now, I'm hoping between now and then we figure that little detail out. But just understand, though, that that wasn't found money or that wasn't plain money, that was real money, one-time money, and it was mostly our commitment to, we're going to find a way to fund this. I want to circle back on the code enforcement because they're buried in the conversation as some sort of an assumption that I have a real problem with, that somehow code enforcement is not functioning right now by some standard that's being applied. Let's understand that this is a bit of a moving target, what happens. Three years ago, the issue, four years ago, the issue was dumpsters behind restaurants. We all sat here when people came up here and talked about the real and viable health and safety issue. Either the year before or the year after that, it was rats. That's kind of an evergreen comes back. And in fact, just so the public understands, there was somebody who was on Fox News complaining about the city isn't doing anything about the rats in our, so we sent code enforcement over there, and come to find out, they hadn't picked up after their dog in three months. No wonder the place wasn't being overrun with rats. They were, they got a ticket, they got a ticket in that case. I think it was just, you know, you can't have that much hypocrisy in one place. But my point is, is that when you look, I just ask, I just picked arbitrarily, and it was really arbitrarily June and May because I knew they're a heavy month. You're talking about, now, these represent a number of cases, but a combined 2,100 code enforcement, when you do the math, that's like 50 to 60 per day per person. I don't care how you cut that up, two things are true. You know, they're moving considering they do get calls occasionally and they do get a 30-minute lunch. And besides that, unfortunately, things can get missed when you're running on that tight of a schedule. And I say that in fairness only because we've had, when code enforcement misses something, it's usually big. It's, you know, and that's what hit the newspapers, you know, out of 2,100, two slipped through and became an issue, three. Now, we know there are more. So, you know, and, you know, like we said, the policy has been to gain compliance, and as a matter of fact, in the vast majority of cases, they are successful in getting compliance. And you can go anywhere and talk to the same people who complain, we've got frequent flyers who violate a lot, we've got frequent flyers who call a lot. And if you talk with them, and I can take you over to talk to a couple right now, they'll tell you that they do a good job, that the ladies, yeah, do a good job, they're just overworked, and they circle back as quick as they can. So my point of all that is, it's a valid, it's a valid goal. I'll stand with Mayor Pro Tem on that. I thought, I think it's a health and safety item. I think if there's one thing, whether you're in the south, north, east, or west part of the city, this comes up often. And so I would recommend that whatever you do with everything else, you leave this alone because this is valuable. I mean, we can parse it, and we can argue about it, we can say what we do or don't understand, but this is real. This affects the people in the neighborhoods right now. This is the quality of life, and it is health and safety. So whatever you do, if we can add the firemen, let's go do it.
Can you please repeat your very important point? Repeat your point.
Easy for you to say.
Repeat your point about the funding, how the money we're using now is not going to be there next year.
Well, it'll be there next year when it's not going to necessarily be there this year after that. Because remember, we took 400,000, and it's more than that, but we roughly went 100, 100, 100, 100.
Yeah, we would be paying for this firefighter with what you said, found money. We found it this time, but next year, how are we going to find it?
Yeah, and we had set it aside for a policeman and a fireman for, we could guarantee two years, more or less. Now we're splitting that. There is no reserve to the reserve.
And you cross your fingers that either revenue increases or there's some savings or cuts elsewhere?
Well, I'll tell you exactly...
Or you have to lay them off or off.
I'll tell you exactly what's going to happen next year at this time, that, you know, if the revenues don't come in, the manager's going to be sitting there handing this council some choices to make.
Yeah, or it may just be, look, there's no money.
I mean, do you really...
It'll be a status quo budget.
I mean, do you really, really want to go and, after you just hired a fireman, lay him off, or a policeman, or lay him off?
Yeah, or you cut elsewhere.
That's why I'm saying, I think this is a good proposal, I can support it, I'll vote for it. But don't take this casually, just don't think we're going to stand here and score some publicity points. This is not going to be an easy decision to back up 12 months from now. Because I don't, we didn't have the money this year, strictly speaking. I mean, we did because we reprioritized.
Yeah, if revenue's down and our costs are up elsewhere, there will be an "I told you so" moment 12 months from now if we have to cut.
Our revenue has not failed to disappoint over the last three years. I don't care what's going on in terms of like the real estate market, we love it over there, but that doesn't translate up the line with the headland.
Right, yes, Your Honor, our inflator for 2019 is 2.1%. That's from the state tax commission.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm done.
Mr. Saltis, please.
I just want to add my two cents. I understand what the councilman's talking about, but I think since I've been on council, this is a shift, like a paradigm shift. We're starting to really focus on public safety, which I think is critical. Police and fire, there's no doubt. And I think that's important. I understand that we do have to plan for the future and the funding and that, but I think this is a real necessary shift in focus. You know, we invited both chiefs here to speak on, you know, answer questions that we had about our budget and our priorities. We heard about the fire, which, you know, I totally understand and agree with, but I was wondering if the chief, police chief can get up here and talk about at least the police side of it, and for the public's sake, understand where we're coming from, because, you know, I'm not sure that they're informed about the type of crime that's going on in our city in certain areas, specifically the hotels. And that is, we've been trying to do everything we can in the last few years. You know, we added the Troy special investigations and the FBI. They've made a significant dent, but I think there's a lot of problems still existing. So if we could have a few minutes, the chief...
Wait a minute, you're shifting gears to police. Can we put a bow on the fire discussion, maybe? I mean, are we going to move on from fire?
Well, the motion was for the goal proposal, correct, for the budget.
Yeah, the substitute motion, yeah.
Right, so I just wanted the chief to at least chime in about, from the police perspective.
Of course, and we'll get to him. Do you want to get to him now or do we still need to talk more about fire?
Well, it sounds like the consensus was, you know, since we're not going to vote on it, I think the consensus was...
No one's yelling, so yeah, go with it. Would Police Chief Cory Haynes honor us with some few words?
Mr. Mayor, hold on. Wait. Okay, if we're going to talk about police, then can we ask the police chief if he would also like his second-year police department personnel to actually go to a second police department personnel the way that we have offered that to fire?
Your Honor, there actually is a police officer in the proposed budget.
Right, I'm asking for a third.
No, wait, wait.
You're talking about a dispatcher?
Right. In the proposed budget, there, before we started this goal process last week, there was a dispatcher and a police officer, yes?
Correct.
Yes, correct, okay. And then we said we're going to do police officer year one, two, firefighter year one, or personnel, year one, two. And now on the table is firefighter, fire personnel, year one, second fire personnel, year one, correct?
No.
Your Honor, I think we're getting hung up on the second year. What we're down to now, if the substitute motion passes, you would have two firefighters, two police officers, and one police service agent or dispatcher.
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
That we discussed at the goal proposal.
And that's unpounded for the second year.
So, sorry, chief?
Good evening, Chief Haynes.
Good evening, Your Honor, council. You know, to speak briefly about the issues that, you know, that we've seen in our hotel areas especially. First of all, I do want to say thank you for everything you've done for this budget so far. We're really trying to address some serious concerns that we have here in the city with crime, and especially when it falls to human trafficking and some of the crimes that we're witnessing in our hotels. And very briefly, I gained this information from our FBI officer that we've assigned to the FBI task force. And what I would like council to know is that just over the past several months, our FBI task force has witnessed eight separate gangs, real-life gangs that have gone through our North End hotels, to name a few. The Latin Kings, they're out of the Bronx, New York, have been here and are running their establishments through our hotels. Vicelords, which is a group out of Detroit, SUR13, which is a Pontiac Street gang for narcotics, the gang that goes by the Detroit Red Wings, that we've had a lot of the smash and grabs, if you all remember the Jared Jewery robberies that are still continuing to happen, as well as another one called the Felony Lane Gang, which is operating between Fort Lauderdale, Florida and Madison Heights, Michigan. Over the course of, from February 23rd of 17 through February 26th of 18, our calls for service to our hotels were 1,128, just to our hotels. Now, that doesn't mean all of that is human trafficking, but a very large number of it has been narcotics violations, prostitution, and other crimes of that nature that have led us into the human trafficking. What's been proposed and what was asked for was one police officer to add to our street level, to our road patrol, to attempt to try to slow down the rate of overtime and to help our officers that are working so many days in a row, multiple shifts. The second position that I know that has been proposed by council is to give a detective bureau position, which again, I'm very thankful for. What we would like to do with that position is add it to our detective bureau and add it so that we can start being more proactive and have our detective bureau operate in some days, which they have in the not-so-recent past, and do some undercover operations in our hotels, but mostly also to have a liaison between some of the other special units like SEMCAC, which is a southeast Michigan Crimes Against Children. They're constantly in our hotels because they're finding that children, kids under the age of 16 are being used in prostitution and in human trafficking. So to have a liaison that can work with our DB very closely, handle cases, and work primarily towards the hotel district in trying to get this crime under control.
Tom?
Thank you.
All right. I need help from the city attorney on the language of the substitute motion.
Here's what my notes would reflect, Mr. Mayor. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, supported by Councilman Gettins, to adopt the goal plan with the addition of one firefighter position in year two will be moved up to year one. So it's the goal plan as proposed with that change is how I'm understanding the substitute motion and support.
I think it should say additional.
Mr. Myers, do you have some suggestions on the language?
Yeah, I think that might give a false connotation that there's an authorization to hire an additional firefighter in the second year, rather than the original intent was to pre-fund. I think the simple way to do it is just to say to add two firefighters.
Yeah, I agree.
In the current year.
For 2018, 19.
Yeah.
Mr. Bliss, it's your motion, right? You think that's a better way to say it?
That, I mean, that's what I meant, so, and the rest will be carried over in the general fund.
And, Your Honor, just so you know how that would look, I was doing a little editing. If that meets with council's approval, then goal G on the list would simply say enhance fire department staffing in response through the addition of two 24-hour firefighter positions. I think that would incorporate the change.
Actually, that's a very good point because what city attorney, Mr. Sherman, said is, we can't tie the hands of future councils and future budgets. So the whole concept of us funding one officer in year two, it's really just a myth. I mean, so really, I guess the motion would say, you adopt the goal plan as printed with one edit to line item G, changing the word "one" to "two" 24-hour firefighter positions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with that.
Okay, just so the record is crystal clear, Larry, should we withdraw the motion and have it restated with that crystal-clear language or...
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I just, I want to be clear that the suggestion is, instead of having firefighter year one, year two, we're having firefighter, two firefighters?
Correct, yes, 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 yes. Two, we will, we will fund two firefighters.
Okay.
There's no limit on the time.
With no limit, with no limit.
I mean, practical circumstances may bring us to drastic measures years from now, but we're not putting a limit on this position, it's positions.
Okay, and then we had initially said for the police personnel, the same thing, at year one and year two. We are now saying police personnel, one person, or we are saying police personnel, two?
We're not changing anything about police. So anything stated in the goal plan about police, it's as printed. One dispatcher, one patrol, and one detective. We're not changing any of the words. We're only going to change the words on the fire. And the fire will say, so the only edit will be, item G will now say enhance fire department staffing in response through the addition of two 24-hour firefighter positions.
And, Your Honor, the reason that the police goal F says one, one full-time police officer is because there's already one that will be contained in the proposed budget. This adds a second one, that gives you year two.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
From the original budget, before we had this, you know, as Mr. Corbett said, this 400,000, we had a dispatcher and we had a police officer, yes? Okay. And what we're adding now, take that away, is we are adding two fire personnel and one police personnel.
Correct. So, Your Honor, you will be left with two police officers, two firefighters, and one So, your honor, you will be left with two police officers, two firefighters, and one police service assistant, and one code enforcement officer.
But you're right, it was City Council who put two firefighters and one detective on the table.
Right, so, so then, forget that we have the dispatcher and the police officer, we had that going in, that was all going in, okay? And from that, we initially had the two fire and the two police, and we're now down to two fire and one police.
No, your assumption that a dispatcher and a patrol officer will be in the budget, that's not changing.
Right, I know that's not changing. I know that's not changing, that's why I don't understand why it keeps being brought up, because it's not changing. What's changing is, instead of saying, "We're funding a police for two years and fire for two years," we're saying, "We're funding fire, position one and two," but we're still only funding police position one. We're not police, we're not funding police position one and two, only fire one and two, keeping in mind, yes, that everyone keeps bringing up the dispatcher and the police officer, that we're already taken care of.
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Well, we haven't already done anything until we adopt the budget. And so what's staff's preparation was one officer and one dispatcher. Through the goals process and then through subsequent discussions tonight, we added additional public safety folks to that, but it's just staff's assumption that those would be added. It's a part of the goals process and so much of the other. In fact, I think staff had, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the idea was to roll those up as a part of the goals discussion, because that was contained in the goals discussion. So I would also amend my motion to add some clarity to that, to include all of those public safety staff changes, along with the addition of the one firefighter. Because I think that the clarification is necessary so that there's no confusion, and so that we don't get blindsided with something may or may not be included in the budget. This will be the directive that the two police officers, one is a patrol, one is a detective, the dispatcher, and the two firefighters are included in this goals proposal.
So you just want to bring to light those, the dispatcher and patrol that would have been baked into the budget?
Yes.
And do not happen to appear in the goal plan, you're just saying, "Hey, let's just put those words into the goal plan."
Your honor, I will make that so. We will revise, if this counsel wishes, we'll revise Goal F to, as Mr. Bliss said, bring those other positions forward, and so that the goal plan reflects two, two, and one.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott, thank you.
I fully support both of these people getting an extra person more than we originally planned, but I would ask of the city manager, is, can we financially support this? And isn't a detective paid more than a patrol officer? Isn't about $30,000 more?
Your honor, yes, there is a 5% differential between patrol officer and detective, but when Ms. Marsh and I went back to the budget after the goal proposal session, we factored that in. So it's a position, it's the patrol officer to support that additional detective assignment, and then the differential in the pay. And I guess as far as funding it, I would refer back to Councilman Corbett's comments a little earlier. We do appropriate on an annual basis, and I hope we don't get to the position next year where I'm asking counsel to make some very tough choices. We'll obviously go through the goals process like we did before, unless counsel wants changes, and you may not have that amount for next year, but we'll try to make it work.
But we can afford it in 2018-19 budget?
Your honor, we, yes, we will make that happen, but remember, these are 25-year career positions that we're talking about.
Yeah, right. Mr. Soltis?
Just, because of what Councilwoman Scott, I just want to make sure that the public's clear, that the reason why we have one patrolman, a patrol person, is because of the overtime and the putting the other patrol person in as a detective is because of the hotel crisis and the infestation, human traffic, and so forth. And that's why, because that particular detective can do the undercover work that the patrolman can't.
You're just saying there were very specific, urgent, present needs that we're addressing, it's not like we're just-
That's correct.
Hiring for the sake of hiring.
Even though it's a 5% increase, it's worth it, because that detective is going to do the work in hotels.
Right.
That a patrolman can't do.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Sherman?
So, to answer your question from a few minutes ago about what to do, how to clean it up, I would suggest that since Mayor Pro Tem Bliss amended his motion, and he clarified what was intended, that we ask support, Mr. Geddings, whether he agrees with that amended motion before counsel votes on the amended motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings, thank you.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor?
You agree. Mr. Corbett?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I catch you up?
Oh, that's good.
I was just going to make the observation that I think all of us were locked into the screen of the money, the night of the goal session. We were shifting out stuff, and the objective of that on the screen was, "How are you going to afford all of your goals?" I think it is true, we had Officer One, Year One, Officer One, Year Two, Office Policeman or Fireman, but it didn't exactly add up. In other words, the line we had for the officer first year and the second year wasn't going to pay for them in total. It was, it was an exercise in trying to find the money. But I don't want to get overly focused on the, I know, I understand the point, there was 400-some-odd thousand dollars total, but it's not going to exactly equal four people, and especially as you start moving down the line. It simply was, we were watching the individual lines, Officer One, Officer Two, rather than watching the bottom. That really should have been where our focus was a little bit. We eventually, at the end, when we got down to the last few thousand. So I, it, I think, I think it clarified, I mean, I think we're all talking around the same thing. Problem is, we're all stopping in our heads and focusing on that one screen, and that's kind of a little misleading. It wasn't fully funding Officer One, Year One, or Officer Two, Year Two, or whatever. We probably would have been better to just simply deal in a gross amount of money and say, "How many officers can we buy out of this?" But there's no money being lost, and it's been said numerous times, no money being prepaid. It was all one year, it was just assumed that we might have something left over out of it to pay for year two. But again, the problem is, we need to look at revenue and overall expenses, because come year two or three, if there isn't a dramatic increase, at least above the rate of inflation or above the rate of raises, then we're gonna have an interesting conversation.
Yeah, we may have tied our hands. Mr. Myers?
Yeah, one point of clarification in response to Mayor Pro Tem Bliss's comment about bringing the proposed budget positions forward to the goal plan, that the police service aide position, the dispatcher, is in there as Goal I. So really, I only have to add one more letter to bring in that second officer and reflect that in the goal plan. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the substitute motion? I'll restate it before we vote. All right. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to adopt the 2018-19 goal plan as printed with the following amendments. Number one will be to amend line item G to read, "Enhance fire department staffing in response through the addition of two 24-hour firefighter positions." And the second amendment will to be add, to add a new goal to reflect the, what position?
Dispatcher. The one, the one police officer.
The one police patrol officer.
No, dispatcher, yeah. The one for patrol, yes.
So to adopt the goal plan with two amendments, that is to amend line item G, so that it reads that we will hire two firefighters, and to add a new goal that would have been in the budget anyway, but to show that we will hire an additional police patrol officer.
Police patrol? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, some final thoughts?
Rosalind and I are both confused here. Cory, would you think, as a chief, that it would be better to have one extra patrol officer, and are you recommending that that second officer be a detective? Or could we use your discretion as to what's needed the most?
Your honor, members of counsel-
Yes, please.
To answer your question, we need patrolmen. And originally, when the budget first came forward, and I was able to put in my information, I asked for three total. Two for patrol, well, actually, three for patrol. But I think with what we have to work with, one officer is definitely gonna help some with the overtime, but we have a serious situation with our hotels that we need to address, and I cannot address that as easily with uniform patrol officers as I could with somebody who is in more, not in undercover capacity completely, but in a detective bureau position.
Is that something that could be flexible, or when you hire detectives, do they always stay a detective for a year?
It would depend on what we need. You know, we can move that position. You know, we usually ask them for a two-year commitment to the detective bureau, but if we need to, you know, if we need to move manpower, we move it where we need to.
Could we possibly put, here we go again, an amendment into the statement that the, we would hire one patrol officer and a dispatcher, but the second patrol officer could be at Cory's discretion as to whether he would be in a detective position or another second patrol officer?
Cory, does that reflect the status quo? I mean, no matter how many officers or command you have, well, it's just officers, you can manipulate who's doing what job and what task.
Yes, that's correct.
So I think, Mrs. Scott, your goal here, your argument, is to give the police chief more flexibility with what to do with his men and women. I think he already has it.
Okay.
As the leader of his department.
All right, that's, I don't know if we-
So, we're giving him the bodies, we're giving him the bodies.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Is that accurate, or at least fair?
Yes, very accurate.
Your honor?
Just, and just to put the dot on the eye on that, most likely, you will promote from within to the detective bureau, you're not going outside to hire, are you?
No, they will be promoted within. The new officer would-
Do you want the job, Bob? I move to-
No, I was just thinking, yeah, that's exactly what I'd be doing.
Okay.
No, it stood to be backloaded, you would add a, you would add a patrolman, which then frees up somebody more tenured on your staff.
That's correct, yes.
That, I think, gives the chief his flexibility that he was speaking to.
Chief, it's just a really small, little piece of this whole discussion, but can you explain, how will, how will the police officers look at these new positions? I mean, is it gonna relieve any department morality strain, or, I mean, what's just the day-to-day thoughts of an officer? Can you expound on what you think your department, what the men and women will think, now that we're funding these type of positions and targeting these specific goals?
Yes, I think it's huge. The officers, at this point in time, especially our younger officers, are overworked. They're worked several days in a row. Like I said before, they're working double shifts, two, three, four times in a row. Even one person added into that rotation to the manpower is going to have positive effects, it's going to reduce the amount of time that they have to work. And especially with our detective bureau, our detective bureau has been much more active. As you know, you saw a couple of emails that came out in the past couple of months where they've done some undercover operations. This will give them the added flexibility that they need, so that they can not only handle their day-to-day caseload, but they can attack some of the other situations that come to their attention as they're doing their casework. So I think it's going to, it's gonna bolster morale, and it's gonna bolster everything within the department, from the officer level.
Morale, right, that's what I meant. Any final thoughts from City Council? I do appreciate this very robust discussion. I would like to call this question soon, so any final thoughts, any final arguments on the substitute motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
If I should just comment?
Yes.
I think this is long overdue, and I'm glad the council is listening to people like the fire and the police, because if we don't have that for our citizens, why are we here? That's our prime goal, is to increase public safety and make it amenable for not only our residents, but for the people that are in that department, so they can do their job the most effective way.
Well said, I think that's enough said.
I don't.
Make it quick, this is really your final comment.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that I understand, we're not changing F, it's going to stay one full-time police officer, we are changing G, it's going to be now two, so we are not increasing with another officer, because, yes, I know it's in there, but we're not, we're not changing it.
Actually, your honor, I do need to add another goal letter, as Mayor Pro Tem Bliss suggested, to take the patrol officer that was in the proposed budget and just simply reflect it in the goal plan.
So right now, the goal plan says a full-time officer to do detective bureau, that satisfies our concerns about some undercover work we need.
Yeah.
But we're gonna add a goal just to show that we are also hiring that one patrol officer, just the regular beat officer.
Doing that anyways, removing it from one column to the other.
We're just putting it there so it's, I say transparent, it's not like we're being, not transparent, but just so it's in there.
I don't think it's necessary.
I'll repeat the motion. Motion was made to adopt the goal plan with two amendments, to amend line item G, so that we are hiring the additional two firefighters, and to add an additional lettered goal to reflect one additional general patrol police officer. Mr. Bliss, it was your motion, I'm gonna give you the final word, and then I'm gonna vote on this. Any comments?
I'd like to vote on it.
Thank you, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries six to one, thank you. Next on the agenda is Report D2, a report from the city attorney and the police chief regarding the entertainment permit for 168 KTV. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on March 13th, 2017, the city and 168 KTV lounge located at 32415 John R. entered into an entertainment permit agreement, paragraph five of which provides for counsel to review the permit and all other licenses issued by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and the agreement honor before March 13th of 2018 and every year thereafter. The city attorney's office and police department have no objections to the continuation of the agreement as requested, but recommend a renewal term of two years. If counsel concurs, the appropriate action would be to renew the agreement for an additional two-year term, with the next review occurring on or about March 13th, 2020, and that is what staff and I recommend.
Thank you. What is the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council concur with the recommendation of staff and agree with the continuation of an agreement for an entertainment permit for 168 KTV lounge under the same terms and conditions, with the next review to occur on or about March 13, 2020.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to concur with the staff recommendation regarding 168 KTV and lounge entertainment permit, and also to renew the agreement for an additional two-year term, with the next review occurring on or about March 13, 2020. Is there discussion? All right, I noticed that Mr. Geddings stepped out just for a brief moment, how should, oh, Mr. Geddings, you're back to vote, okay.
Yes, sir.
We'll just, we'll do a voice vote, don't worry. Okay, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is item F1, under bid awards or purchases, it's a report from the DPS director on water main replacement. Mr. Myers?
Yes, your honor, on February 13th, the city received three sealed bids for water main pipe and parts for the 2018. Proposal are three related water main replacement projects. The lowest responsible overall bidder, who quoted all items, is Core &amp; Main, for unit costs in a total estimated amount of $127,347.78. Core &amp; Main is the successor to HD Supply Water Works, which was spun off from its parent company, HD Supply, last fall. They have been the low bidder for water main pipe and parts for many years, providing consistently excellent products and service, and a trusted business relationship with the city. Staff and I recommend that counsel award the bid for the 2018 water main replacement pipe and parts to the lowest responsible bidder, Core &amp; Main, for unit prices in a total estimated project amount of $127,347.78. Funds are budgeted and available for the purchase, and staff and I would also recommend that council's motion include the option to extend the unit pricing for the 2018 standalone water main replacement- water main replacement projects, which are the non-R3 road projects, of course, subject to fiscal 2019 budget approval by council.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the Wishe's City Council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we award the bid for the 2018 water main replacement pipe and parts to the lowest responsible bidder, Core and Main, for a total project amounting to $127,347.78. I would also like to include in my motion to extend this bid to the upcoming proposed standalone, non-R3 water main project for the 2018, 2019 budget year. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Sherman?
At the unit prices identified and subject to budget approval.
I'll amend that.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Make me repeat that. Motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to award the bid to Core and Main for the unit prices identified for a total estimated project in the amount of $127,347.78, including the option to extend the unit pricing for 2018 standalone water main replacement projects, that is, the non-proposal RE, and this will be subject to fiscal year 2018 budget approval. At the prices listed or specified?
For those unit prices and its 2019 budget.
And for those unit prices of 2019.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there a discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is F-2, from the purchasing coordinator regarding the CDBG funding. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff and I recommend that council award the CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Funded Yard Services Lawn Service Program Contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Zimmerman Lawn &amp; Snow, for the 2018 mowing season at a unit price of $12 per lot, and to authorize the city to proceed to the next lowest responsible bidder, Promo Landscaping, at unit pricing of $16 per lot, in the event that the contract with Zimmerman is canceled due to non-performance or other issues.
Thank you, sir. What's the Wishe's City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I hope for council to award the bid, the CDBG Funded Yard Services Lawn Service Program Contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Zimmerman Law &amp; Snow, for the 2018 mowing season at a unit price of $12 per lot, and to authorize the city to proceed to the next lowest responsible bidder, Promo Landscaping, at unit pricing of $16 per lot, in the event that the contract with Zimmerman is canceled due to non-performance or other issues.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to award the CDBG Funded Yard Services Program Contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Zimmerman Lawn &amp; Snow, for the 2018 mowing season at a unit price of $12 per lot, and to further authorize the city to proceed to the next responsible bidder, Promo Landscaping, at a unit price of 16 per lot, in the event that the contract with Zimmerman is canceled due to non-performance or other issues. Is there discussion on this item? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. This motion carries. We can proceed to the minutes. Can I have a motion regarding the last regular council minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the minutes of the February 26th meeting be printed, be approved as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
I second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to adopt as printed the regular city council meeting minutes of 2:26:18. Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We have several applicants to our boards and commissions. Are there any nominations from city council members tonight?
Mr. Mayor, it appears that we have several people who have applied for the Environmental Citizens Committee.
Of course.
And it looks as though we have enough people to actually fill our alternates as well.
Fantastic.
I do have a question before I nominate, and that is, there are different dates that the term is until, because it's a new board, so some are 2019, 2021. So I was just going to say the first person who applied would stay until 21, the next person until 20, and so forth, is that?
That's a good, that's a good plan of action, if that's how you'll bring your motion.
And the last two people are, would be the two alternates.
I think that's a very fair process, so if you'd like to make a motion.
Okay, do I need to name everybody and their term?
I think we should name-
I think you should do it, Mr. Mayor, I think you should do it individually, because the terms will be different. It could be done collectively, but if some, if another council member has somebody else in mind, how would you separate them then? I don't know.
Yeah, so I guess, please state the motion, you know, I, if you agree with this, you know, I nominate person X to the Environmental Citizens Committee on the regular position expiring 2021.
All right. I would like to nominate Stephen Chek to the Environmental Citizens Committee expiring February 22nd, 2021.
Thank you. Is there support for this motion?
Support, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there any discussion on appointing Stephen Chek to the Environmental Citizens Committee for a three-year term expiring 2/22/21? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Another motion, please?
I would like to nominate Michael Sally to the Environmental Citizens Committee for a position, a term ending February 22nd, 2020.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilor Grafstein, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to appoint Mike Sally to a term on the Environmental Citizens Committee expiring 2/22/20. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next, please.
I would like to appoint Sarah Pop to the Environmental Citizens Committee for a term expiring February 22nd, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on appointing Sarah Pop to the Environmental Citizens Committee for a term expiring 2/22/20? Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next, please.
I would like to nominate Alexander Bedd to the Environmental Citizens Committee for a position expiring February 22nd, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Alexander Bedd to the Environmental Citizens Committee for a term expiring 2/22/19? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next, please.
I would like to nominate Brandon Wickham to the Environmental Citizens Committee for a term expiring February 22nd, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a support?
Mr. Mayor?
Please?
Support, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Brandon Wickham for a term on the Environmental Citizens Committee expiring 2/22/19? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I have nominations for the two alternate seats, please?
I would like to nominate Joshua Schroder to the, to the Environmental Citizens Committee alternate position expiring February 22nd, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Josh Schroder to the alternate seat on the Environmental Citizens Committee that expires 2/22/21?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just want to mention that, and I'm not sure the order the nominating petitions came in, but this is alternate number two.
Oh, that's fine, I'm just going in order.
The one expiring 2021, and not 2020.
Right, so he's alternate number two, which means he would only, he would only move into, to position in the event there were two people missing on the board.
Oh, that's a good point.
Oh, okay.
Withdraw your nomination.
Withdraw my nomination.
Restate it, please.
Okay, I would like to nominate Joshua Schroder to the Environmental Citizens Committee to alternate one position for a term ending February 22nd, 2020.
Yeah, that sounds right. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Josh Schroder to the alternate seat on the Environmental Citizens Committee, which expires 2/22/20? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I have the final motion for the final alternate seat?
I would like to nominate Heather Haynes to the Environmental Citizens Committee as alternate two, expiring February 22nd, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Second.
Any discussion, thank you, any discussion on appointing Heather Haynes to the other alternate seat on the Environmental Citizens Committee, which expires 2/22/21? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion carries. All those motions carry. Any other nominations to boards and commissions? All right, hearing none, you can always get to them next meeting, so we'll move up. Yes, sir?
Did we fill the council appointments for this board yet?
Actually-
Because I think there was an alternate that was created.
Thank you, Pro Tem Bliss, yes, there is, I am the council representative, but I do not have an alternate.
So there was an alternate created when we voted to create this board, right? So we should fill that here today, right? I mean, or not, I'm just pointing out.
Or, can we maybe delay that till next meeting?
Let's talk about it, and we'll come back another meeting to vote.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, any other nominations to our boards and commissions tonight? All right, so we do not have an executive session planned, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from members of city council and staff. So, Mr. Corbett, you're first up.
Couple items this evening, Your Honor. I will be having my office hours at the library this Friday, 1:00 to 3:00, if anybody wants to stop by and talk, or complain, or find out about what's going on. Unfortunately, that will be my last office meeting for a few weeks, and that leads me to number two, what I need to discuss this evening. I had a conversation on behalf of the council with Mayor Pro Tem Bliss earlier, and so I need to make mention of it, I think, publicly tonight. I, unlike, in fact, Mr. Bliss and Mr. Gettins over there, I'm not exactly poster boy for good health and body beautiful, but I am pretty good, though, about my annual checkup. That I've always been pretty good about. And about 10, 12 years ago, a heart murmur was noted in my examination, and it's been monitored over the years, and my, my exam this year didn't get much further past the EKG, and I found myself whisked off to several different places, doctors and so on, and it culminated in a catheterization a couple of weeks ago over at Beaumont. And the result is, is that I have a valve that will have to be replaced sooner rather than later. That's the bad news. The good news is there's nothing else at issue, there are no blockages. A lot of times, people find out they have a valve problem and they have a heart attack. Well, I haven't had that. And the other valves seem to be working well, so I seem to be a candidate for the minimally invasive technique, we'll see. But, so two weeks from tonight, instead of being with you, I will hopefully be in a step-down unit at Beaumont, and I'm guessing three to five weeks, we'll see. It could be, if they're able to go with that technique as opposed to the other, the normal way they do it, which would normally be closer to eight weeks. So I see, you know, based, on the basis of the reports and everything the doctors are telling me, I see no reason I won't be able to complete my term of office and possibly beyond, but I will need to be gone for a few weeks. My goal is to be back in time for the budget meeting in May, because you all have done such a bang-up jock tonight on it, so you may need my extra vote. But, but I, like I said, I'm fairly confident, I've been, I'm in good hands, and, and I will see you soon. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. We will obviously excuse your absences, and we do look forward to your return, and we will have the city manager at your bedside giving you regular reports. Maybe that'll strengthen your heart through the stress.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that may not be on the good side.
But thank you for sharing that, Mr. Corbett. We really care about you. Anything else, Mr. Corbett?
I'm done.
Mr. Bliss?
Sure, well, first, I wish Councilman Corbett a speedy recovery. We're all behind you, whatever we can do and however we can help, you know, definitely don't worry, don't hesitate to reach out to me if there's anything that I can do, even if you want to just hear what's going on here. I don't know why you would, when you could be, you know, relaxing, watching Netflix, binging on, like, Stranger Things.
Basketball.
Okay. My second item tonight, I didn't include it, because it was already a little bit of a chaotic discussion, we'll say, but I would like to see, as a part of the budget process, us to discuss, or simply to include, every one of the consent, the consent agenda items that passed with a majority of council. As, for the general public's consumption, we, we have three different areas where we would place these different council goals. You had higher dollar value, middle dollar value, and then we had these consent agenda items, which were really low-cost, things that we wanted to see if there was consensus from council. The unanimous ones were included in this goal plan. But there were a lot of others that had majority votes on council, some even 5-2, 6-1, that in a normal meeting would pass through with flying colors. I mean, heck, the goal's proposal itself passed through 6-1 tonight. And so I would just like that anything that had majority, just as if it would if it was brought up in a meeting, be included, and if it does need to come to a meeting, I'd be happy to rattle them off one at a time, like we just did for environmental board appointments, and make sure that we can get everything on the record. But I think, you know, we don't, we don't operate in a, you know, unanimous consent government, you know, we operate in simple majorities and sometimes super majorities, and so anything that's meeting that requirement, I think that should be included until otherwise stated by council, and so I would like staff to either include that in the process, or give us an avenue at a, at a future public meeting, where we can either take them all individually, collectively, whatever we would need to do. But I think it's important that we honor, you know, the current state of government that we have, and that anything that is a majority should be implemented.
Your Honor, if council wishes to proceed along those lines, given where we are with the budget, I will need a motion and formal direction from council tonight to do that.
Before we, Mr. Mayor, before we call formal and stuff, I, I had a question, and I don't know if this, this addresses what you're looking for, but the, the normal goal, the goal plan we just adopted, I don't, I don't remember, and I was quickly trying to find it, I don't remember, they weren't in that, were they?
Not, not the-
The plan we adopted tonight, it was in there?
The unanimous ones were. But anything that was 6-1, 5, 5-2, those were not included, and so I'm just asking as a part of this process that, you know, we don't just draw the line at unanimous, that we, you know, take the things that had majority support of council, because if they were brought up at a meeting and had the same majority support, they'd get included. So I'm, I'm simply asking, whatever the best avenue is, I'm just asking staff to look into how we would go about doing that. I mean, does it need to be added to an agenda, and we take everything individually? Could it just be, you know, added all at once? I don't know, but I, I do think that we're doing a disservice to the public by not including, discussing, or having a vote on things that had majority support of council on. I, I just think that it's bad practice, is all. Mr. Mayor, can we think about that one?
Yeah, yeah, some, yeah, some ideas?
Because on the one hand, we wouldn't, I mean, on the one hand, they usually, these things usually do find their way to the table. On the other hand, the reason they didn't is because they didn't get unanimous consent. I mean...
I mean, do you want to vote on them all individually at the next council meeting?
Yeah, and that would be okay with me. My point was just that we don't operate on a unanimous consent process, so something 5-2 or 6-1, that passes. And so anything that had support of, you know, a majority of council members, I think, you know, we should include at a public hearing, or, or even just include in general because it passed, right? That's my only point.
I mean, yeah, they have, these have been discussed at, or at least available to the public for two public meetings before tonight. So there would be no problem if we do vote on them tonight, but do we want to vote on them tonight? Do we want to vote on them next time? Do we just not, do we just want to ignore what the Mayor Pro Tem is saying?
My wife does this sometimes, and my kids definitely do, so. I just think it sets a bad precedent that some things we will vote on in a 4-3 that passes and we enact it, and then these items, we would have to then take, add to it, you know, add to an agenda, which is perfectly fine, and then it could still pass 4-3. I just think it sets a dangerous precedent where we say something has to have unanimous consent, because that's just not how we operate.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, yeah, it is open comment.
If, if we are going to be using our consent to be voting, and it is a budget item, then would it need to be a 5, or would it need to be a 4?
What? Majority rule?
Your Honor, this, yeah, this, this would not require a supermajority vote at this point to, to direct the manager to incorporate those in the proposed budget. Once you approve the budget and appropriate the funds, yes, that is a supermajority vote.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just, I would recall to everybody where that came from. There were goals that would come in that usually were no-brainers. I'm, I'm trying to think of an example, and nothing's coming to mind, but the librarian wants to, you know, change the lighting in one end, that's all I got, in one end of the, in one end of the hall, and for, yeah, go ahead. It didn't, it didn't... The reason they're on the consent list and not on the 1,000 to 2, or 3 to 5, or whatever, is because it's either a no-brainer, or it, or it has no money attached to it. So that was the reason that we were doing, because usually there was no money attached to it, and if there's no money attached to it, why would a politician care? So I, I don't know. I, we've done pretty good, and, you know, is this, is this, did you lose on a 5-2, and you're mad about something?
No, you're, actually, Your Honor, there's, there's even the reverse. There are, there are several that I didn't select that were held out because I didn't. And so I just think as a, as a point of order, whether or not I want it doesn't mean anything in the general scheme of the city. Whether or not we want it is what matters. And so, you know, there are several that even I voted against in the consent that should be enacted because they had a majority in, in support of. And so I'm, I'm just saying, saying as a, I don't know, not necessarily a point of order, but as a point of policy, we should make sure that anything that has a majority of support gets enacted.
You know, the whole idea with this consent voting is, these are so easy, let's not spend time discussing them. Maybe we've already crossed that point where we've discussed them too much, so... We have not enjoyed the benefit of saving time. That's my point, so I, if you want to make a motion to include the majority consents, just, I don't know, do it now?
Do, do we need a motion? Is that what?
Yes, Your Honor, I would want formal direction from council.
Okay, then I'd be, come what may, I will make the motion to include all consent agenda items that had a majority of council support.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Second? Uh, thank you, Ms. Grafstein. All right, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to include in the proposed budget those consent goals that received a majority council yes votes. Is there discussion on this? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Mr. Bliss, it's still a open floor discussions for you to close the meeting. Anything else?
That's all I had tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, Mr. Gettings, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, just wish Councilman Corbett a quick recovery so he can get back and have fun with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
I was laughing at Councilman Getting's definition of fun. But I will say this, on behalf of the City Attorney's Office and the extended Sherman family, I want to wish Councilman Corbett a successful surgery, a speedy and complete recovery, and hope to see him right back here sitting at the end of the dais very soon. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
What he said, Your Honor.
Yeah, great. On Ms. Prince?
As a fellow valve warrior, I wish you a very speedy recovery, and I have one word of advice to you: walk. You will get better faster.
Ms. Grafstein?
Just want to wish Councilman Corbett a speedy recovery.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm very happy that we made these decisions for the police and the fire. Like I said, they're long overdue, something I've wanted for a long time. And I also want to thank both of our chiefs and both of our departments on keeping us informed whenever we get our dollars' worth, because we really do. I'm just so happy, especially for the fire. I've wanted this for a long time. Bob, our prayers are going to be with you. We're going to be thinking of you. I hope you'll be in close contact, or at least your representative Linda will be, and our very best goes to you. You're the brains of our council. I've said it many times, and so...
I will be in trouble.
Yeah, we need you here. Also to remind everybody that on Friday, March 23rd, from 5 o'clock to, I believe it's 7 o'clock or an 8 o'clock, the Memorial Day Parade Committee will be having a spaghetti dinner to raise funds, and that will be at the Senior Center. And that is Friday, March 23rd at 5 o'clock, and the cost is, I believe, is about $10, so it's very reasonable, and that will, there'll maybe some auction items, too, that you might be able to take a part of, but we'd like your support. I know that we are giving the Memorial Day Parade a lot more support this year, which is fascinating, but I think that they are always going to be trying to raise funds for the following years, so, you know, and I think it is going to be much improved over what it's been, and I hope everybody comes and watches it. Also, on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week, I will be tending the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference in Lansing. It's a wonderful and annual event that I was not able to take part of last year because of my operation, but I'm looking forward to spending time with a lot of elected officials all over the state and getting a lot of information about what's going on in Michigan, what items we should be aware of. They are going to be having a conference on medical marijuana, which I'm taking, and I'm sure that I will going to be glad and make a lot of valuable connections and talking with our legislators and hearing what's going on. I appreciate all that, and one nice thing about it, being a lifetime member of MML, the city doesn't have to pay for my registration, so I'm saving money. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Soltis?
Yes, Your Honor, real quick, I, I think to make real significant structural change with the fire and EMS necessary to stay in the current condition that we face in our city, described here tonight, I would like to request City Manager Myers to produce a report that examines how we as a city can increase the fire staffing, minimum staffing from 6 to 7, in terms of cost, functionality, need, surrounding communities, et cetera. Secondly, I looked at the house fires just now, pictures, horrific.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that the, that we, the city, can help facilitate the family that, who lost their house in devastation here, receive like Red Cross assistance, so if we can do that, I appreciate it.
Just a report?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. Yeah, this is a long meeting, and it was an important meeting, and so I want to thank City Council staff and members of our fire department and who contributed. You know, City Council has a big job. It's a $50 million budget. You know, we're representing 30,000 residents, just under 2,000 businesses. If I remember right, you know, 140 full-time employees, 140 part-time employees, dozens and dozens and dozens of volunteers on our boards and commissions, and we, it's difficult, it's a very difficult job that City Council members have balancing all of those demands. And it's very important to get feedback throughout the whole system. It's very important that we have many meetings and many discussions. That's why the goal process is such an important part of us getting to the conclusion of having a budget that reflects our values. So thank you very much, City Council, for being patient and speaking up tonight and at future meetings. Your input is so much, so important. Mr. Corbett, we'll see you soon. We will all be thinking of you and awaiting the good news. And is there any other business before City Council tonight? All right, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Good evening.